That work for you, science.
I have a chance.
Why?
I started with one of that football.
They have architects and stuff.
I've been to materials.
That came to smart.
True.
That was uh. It's tiny like.
I mean.
I can't even see six first little beach.
I have five hundred dollars cash.
Steve.
Testing this out. I can't get them access to this.
Thank you.
On my laptop. You're controversial.
I know.
But this laptop.
I got it. It's coming on mine.
Is it?
Yeah.
Maybe I need to restart mine.
I, yeah, I know all that stuff gets big.
Maybe I need to restart it since we unplugged that.
You wouldn't do that.
Or back in.
Like. But I don't want.
One, he says nineteen seventy-nine, five thousand dollars, but one. And I thought you could maybe check that better.
And my phone says that's the way to connect my highest. So.
Forty.
Maybe just need to.
Sure.
We'll see here.
I actually pulled out used equipment. I had damn airplane on it. On purple waiver.
Yeah, we got.
Oh shit.
Something like.
I'm like, wait a minute, that gives me.
No.
I guess they didn't know.
Well, I can take minutes without internet, but.
Yeah.
I mean, for.
I should get online up here. Yeah.
Absolutely nuts.
I know, I know where to say that.
Dick did pretty good on the.
You got rid of all three of your other ones?
You got rid of all three of them.
Oh, screaming now.
Tom bought.
No. What one Tom likes. And by that.
The one you want the. The last one they bought.
That older one.
Yeah, that's.
That one's going to the.
Dick kept wanting to do the ones instead. I think it's seven twenty-five. I don't remember.
Seventy-eighty.
Seventy-seven.
So they did now the final seven.
Dick is.
To most part.
Tom just wants to cut bridge, salted.
Two neighbors.
Yeah, two neighbors. We were up by. Melissa Mayfield, eight miles. There were Freddy and the one one up Milton just cut hay. That was the last time he was gonna do it. I didn't know that. So. I roll. Tell me you're getting out of it.
I'm gonna retire.
I'm gonna retire. Now I don't have a truck driving job.
Well, you did a better.
I finished well on the. No, that's what he told me. Here, I'll tell you what, I'm setting you up. I don't want that no head either, what I got.
We're doing work for Nelson there.
No.
As a mechanic.
I couldn't keep up with it. No, I don't know. Unless he gets old. Elman, I still have to call it one of working on a V.
Yeah.
Wasn't V.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
It's a little harder to get off that creeper every year when you get on a truck.
Well, you get one of your hands up and.
You know, I jack everything up and sit on a stool. I don't get on the creeper.
You oughta.
It's getting hard to get your headband back enough to see through the game by.
You need to get like they got over the car over there. And truck lifts?
Get a lift.
Yeah, I looked at seven. Well, I.
Why do you buy a wireless set?
Is that an individual one? So you get a.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But it said six. That wasn't said six. It said six, sixty or sixty-five. And you look there.
Yeah, they had them on now.
Because they did like.
Well, you can. You might have done.
Six.
Mine's just. Literally experience two years.
Are you getting any internet troubles?
I know.
I'm not either. Mike said he's got it. This one he's got it. I've got, I don't know.
Said they work great. Once you get them set where you want.
Weird.
No, it's, it's all weird. It's like clouds.
It's so weird.
How long here you want?
I don't know.
I'm, I'm checking on either one.
See, I have a couple of that.
I have no idea.
I don't know whether there's a truck up there. I think.
No, my wifi says not connected.
He said something about, I don't know if they've done it or not.
Yeah, that's what it says on my computer too. But this one's working.
I mean.
And Mike said he's got it. Sure it's working, Dick?
No, it's.
No?
Yeah, they were just. Trouble in buying that also.
I can have that, I can have that run. Packets down there.
You do your show.
Back at us. Which the, which helps. Which I.
Are you gonna?
But yes, Mike has welcomed my team of cattle.
He gave you more stalls. He had more stuff in there. Actually, he said he didn't get his stall yet. Did you? He got that back.
Yeah, we're done the weekends. Going to slide the concrete outside. I'm used to that.
Does he, you're getting ten or anything?
Well, he doesn't need it. Doesn't need to have to worry about it. Do you just let the garden run?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're all by anyway.
My phone.
I thought it was pretty good.
Is your house?
Shag.
About forty years.
Mine, mine default it. Yeah, I default it through.
Last home before he got in there.
And my phone's connected.
Mine's connected through the.
It's just like, really weird.
Yeah.
Mine never again.
I'm having to co-print some packets for you now.
So from what I saw, that may be.
Right. I'm having to go break some commissioner packets down, like print to monies, but.
Yeah.
Those that don't have internet.
I don't know if you expect to know much.
Thank you, John.
Well, see now, Freddy, Freddy, you shouldn't be going to sneak in.
That's what I heard because we do.
He's doing our jobs.
And I'm. Over the hide.
Yeah, I mean, they're.
They're both there last weekend.
They initially did that, but now it says no.
I think. You know, they're off.
There you go.
You wait, you just figured that. Hold on.
Go ahead.
I look at she wanted to just nine oh five. I went super gentle. That's all the part of the ride, okay? Just I look at you, we're on.
Second, we're transing out the west end to thirty-five.
On board?
Yeah. Then they be steering to be great.
You ready for dinner?
Yeah.
Yeah, babe. Spike branch on each wheel. To reserve.
I can. Trip and also trip on my. Tablet I can. It's, it's hooked up through the phone.
Ah.
So I can.
From what you read, you get.
I can read my tablet today.
Last night? This morning, this morning. Yeah, so it was wet. It was wet from Glare River to Yattail, south of three oh six. And you're right over there. You had.
Well, we walked out this morning. Joe goes, did it?
And he.
No. So the suburban, Jill's car. Daughter's car. Jill's car was the only one that was.
Well, that was in. I was like, your car is the only one.
You don't see that just everywhere.
It woke me up and we didn't even get nothing. Something.
Was that my standard life?
I didn't know it was supposed to.
I've. I've heard of uh. Of thunder cells. I've heard of uh supercells, but I've never heard of microcells.
Yours was only two of them too, probably.
Probably.
I picked up one like heck this morning. After the other day when we got just a little sprinkled and the wind was blowing.
My God, I didn't realize it. Yeah.
I mean, the dust was blowing, you know?
I remember one time I cleaned and picked up, I really did stuff.
End of the year. He was in high school and running town by. What's that?
You never roll the windows up?
I can get on here. So I can get on.
And true.
Right. So I loaded mine.
So you can't get anybody on there.
We clean, being dust.
I'm here. It seems to be fine. Um. I'm checking.
Chick or?
Now Drew said it's connected to.
Yeah. So.
I'm guessing.
Cause he's.
Yeah.
And Rain says he can hear us. He's on the meeting, so that's working. But I have, I have no idea.
So you don't, you have a one, you don't have it on the other.
Yeah.
I've, I restarted my.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they. Yeah. Spinning its wheels on me.
Yours is open?
Yeah.
A way back.
I initially made and downloaded.
Inside.
Down that branch. West connected. So I.
I'm gonna be on that.
It's like. There's why I'm on the phone. Big goes. A whole shoot at you.
I offered to make sure my phone too, so. But it's uh. I'll set this one aside.
Um, Nicole's printing some paper packets. She's calling Erickson's, so.
They didn't want us behind. That's crazy. Mine essentially blew up right here.
Yeah.
So. No, no, it just, it uh, when I picked it up, the. The back.
I remember these batteries.
The back fell off.
Harry, this is Lane.
Very expanded.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just making sure you could, you were getting it on the other end.
Yep, it.
I'm wondering if.
It seems to be working here, except none of our laptops will connect. Drew's will, and he's sitting right here, but ours won't, so we're just waiting for. Paper packets to be printed and then we'll get going.
Okay, it all worked at the planning and zoning meeting last night too, so. Yeah, no idea.
All right.
Yeah. But I was complaining. I were doing. Yeah. I'm, and I'm connected through Verizon on my. Tablet right now, I get. But my, my Apple, my Apple won't connect. It did at home. It did at home. I went through the packet at home.
So he says, yeah, so. All Apple used to like. Oh, it was fine when I got.
Well, I've got both. I.
So is.
I want those different punch. Is that what you're saying? Yes, Apple users are.
It's important.
Yes.
Well, so missed the user.
Yeah.
Apple.
Yeah, no, I. I use, I use both, so I'm, I'm a belt and suspenders kind of guy. One won't work, the other. Not likely to find your, your, your pants down around the, around your ankles.
Yeah, she's printing them. Seventy-five pages each, just taking just a little bit. She called Erickson's too, so.
Yeah.
Hi, we have a new employee in our office, Kyle Calvert. If you want, the commissioners, Travis Mochler. Betty Smith. Mike Manning. And Dick Hammond.
Last time I figured out Buddha.
Yeah, slowly coming.
It's coming along.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Yeah.
You bet.
And you know Drew?
Yeah.
And have you met Rod from the highway shop? Rod from the highway shop, yeah.
Here comes our star.
We have no internet in our. Well, some of us.
She might have.
Some of us do, so yours might work, it might not.
She can log in.
We have internet in our office.
Yeah.
Well, our Zoom's working.
Let's move on to his office.
So. And Drew's is working. So there's two out of.
As close as I can tell, the, the commissioners have been deauthorized. Oh, what did we do?
Apparently my internet understands me today.
And mine just, mine just burned up two weeks ago, so.
Not gonna win. It looks okay.
Looks good?
All right.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, you're our superstar.
You gotta do the formal.
Walking to her office.
Yeah.
I come to me down there. The kids still wait to me. It's on us there. Bet your daughter can't wait till your son goes to college. Because she has a G ball. I'm thinking that she cannot. He's not taking.
No.
Well, one thousand, no.
He drives a taxi. He doesn't get a car. Great.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see her driving the, the, the other day and maybe came home there, pretty soon left again with your son with it at that. I'm thinking, I'll bet you there was, and she said, get him out of here. That's a great place. That's a great thing to run around town.
Yeah. That's insane. Yes.
Yeah, well, maybe.
Do you want this deal? And they don't want to go outside of town, but that's like, that's a good thing. Yeah, they need big bumpers. Where are we at on the agenda? We're not. We're waiting for packets to be printed. Oh. Well, yeah.
She would have, she would have to do one better than that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well. What else is?
Or me, I'm okay too, so. Mainly we need one for Travis.
They're probably about done at this point anyway, so. And I should come down here and find out what I missed out on for. Yeah, I think that's an interesting Q and A. That's a really interesting Q and A. That's very interesting experiences.
Did you know the, the lawyer from that? The main person then, if you knew him before.
The prosecutor, you mean?
Prosecutor.
Oh, yeah.
They.
Oh, Mark Bargum, yes, yes, very, very well. I'm from Stacey Attorney Association things and.
Okay.
Yes, so. So yeah, I was honored that he asked me to just. Yes, yes. So very, very good attorney. For Theo's attorney, that was for years, trying to. He's trying for years. It's good that it's working.
So he's the doing.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. Very experienced attorney. And it was interesting to zoom in for various meetings and. Then get together for some. When we get to approving the agenda, if we can add surplusing the old sheriff's car computers, that would be great. Um, when we get to the agenda, if we can add surplusing the old sheriff's vehicle computers, that would be great.
Okay, I'm ready to start. All right, you ready, Kay? Yeah, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Start with the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call call.
Mochler.
Here.
Packard, Dobson, Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none. Approve agenda?
I move it. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Uh, move to approve for the addition of surplus to sheriff's car computers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion passes. Approve minutes.
Move to approve the minute. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard that aren't on the agenda? Hearing none. Uh, Rod, surplus closed bridges?
Morning. Uh, been some discussion. Having a couple of people interested in. Our old bridges when we get rid of them after um. Erlin got the one up there. Seems a lot like everybody's got a crypt. They wanna. Put one on, somebody called Travis. We had a couple inquiries at the office. And I talked to the state. Um, and they don't see any reason why we couldn't do it on our own. Uh, not do the state. Removal project and just. You have to put, advertise it, this bridge is for sale. Take bids, you know, just like we would for an old piece of equipment. And the only thing is like I told Travis, should we put out the bid so. They're not just gonna take the bridge and leave everything out. They gotta remove everything like they're doing out here on. So on the Manning bottom, I call it, that bridge over the Vermillion River is actually. Out of there now, except for the south approach. I was down there yesterday and it's all cut up. Most of it's all the way, the plank are there. And when they get done, all the caissons and the pilings are out of the river. And then I believe they have to build the berm. So we don't have to worry about it ever, you know, having a gap in case somebody wants to. Try to do a Duke's Hazard or something. But uh, state said there's no problem with it, so. Just kind of curious what your thoughts.
So it's sell as is, where is with uh. The, the end piers have to be removed to the concrete end piers?
Well, most of these have wooden back walls.
Okay.
Well, all the, all those through trusses over the Vermont River.
Yeah.
They have plank back walls sitting on piling. Actually, what they do is they have two approach fans. On piling wood and then they come to the metal bridge that's actually over the river channel. And that one down there, I believe had three or four approach spans before you even got to the bridge. So, but they're still talking a hundred and. Eighty-tum feet of bridge, or the one Erlin got was seventy.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't know if these people understand what. Goes into taking one of those out. You know, we had, we give. A bid to a couple of them here, here, a few years back. I don't remember who got that. But we had two bridges on Carp Street and one on three oh. South of three oh seven. Actually, the one south of this bridge, the guy contacted you about.
Yep.
And of course, they didn't. Couldn't reach one side and so. Stuff kind of got left. It's out of the water, but it's still there.
So.
And we still have bridge, we still have to maintain the road closed barricades.
That's uh, the one that's partially out already is the one on four sixty-fifth, the one that's north-south. It's right north of the old Mulholland Place there.
Yeah, that's the one they're working on now.
But we haven't touched the one that's northeast.
No, we, those two have not come up for even bid yet. You know, we put three of them on, we put three of them on.
Right.
The one they're taking out now, the one that goes east to the east on three, two, uh, three fourteen street.
Yeah.
And then one clear up north as well. I, I don't know why I put it on that program, but we took that out ourselves. It's just a little. Wooden one. I don't know why it got on there. That was my mistake. But we got like the one by the landfill.
Right.
We got this one that they contacted us about, which is east of uh Bob Gregwire's old place. And. Jesus, gotta be it. One. On three. Thirteenth, if you go east of the curb, we call it the old Bucks Ranch.
Right.
Don't know who lives way down there. Somebody lives down there just for to get to the bridge and that one's closed too, all over the Vermont River on. You know, minimum maintenance roads. So I, I don't know, I. If we do this. I'll just soon have a engineer work up the contract so they get. So we get everything out because it always looks like I understand it, but nobody else does.
If we were to surplus these, can we still qualify for the state program?
Well, we can't do the ones that we already are in the program on. You mean to remove it.
Yeah, just say nobody takes them.
Yeah, I think we could. I think we do that first. Nobody wants it, then we can put it. The next round of those to add to, I believe is coming up in August or September. I was gonna put like the one just north of landfill. Uh, three fifteen street maybe or fourteenth over there and then uh. The one east of Bucks Ranch and. There's one other one. I just can't. Oh, well, then we got the Heller Bridge too. Which is three oh three, just east of Norwegian Avenue over there. Western nineteen and what mile and a half, something like that. I mean, we got these. You know, we have people in here that don't want us to take them out so they go fishing. And so I contacted the state about that and their, I had contacted insurance company. And they absolutely said that's not a good idea. And Aberdeen or Brown County did one with game fishing parks. And then a little girl got hurt and fell off into the ridge river because. They didn't reinforce the railings. They just left the old railings up. And so that bridge is gone because it ended up, was gonna cost way more to keep it safe. Then, and then you still gotta maintain it. The game fishing parks, they'll put up signs, but they don't want. Any part of the money to promote it, you know? I don't know. That was over some prick up there somewheres. So, yeah, we talked about that quite a while ago. I guess I had never brought it back up. That insurance company said. Not a, that's a big liability you're taking.
None of these places on the Vermillion are, are where the river is so wide that it isn't just as good to fish from the bank anyway.
Fish from the bank. Everybody goes there and fishes under the bridge anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, you can see, I mean, there's a widened up area. They just walked down and. And then we gotta keep maintaining the barricades and. And I got a call the other day. They tried to burn the Heller Bridge. But they didn't. They had a campfire in front of our signs. But they didn't, you know, we, we lost two bridges. That way, the Lodi Bridge.
Yeah.
That burned back in the nineties. And we got called in the middle of the night. I was on the fire department. I've never seen the. Hot fire like the bridge flank melted iron just. It all got soft and laid into the river, you know, and took, I don't know, six, eight years before we got a bridge back in there, I think.
So melt it.
Well, that plank, you know, there's. Three layers of plank under there.
That's true.
So.
So, so it sounds like a, a, a win-win. Um, my only, my only reservation is around liability. I would not want to do it unless we could transfer the liability to the person taken down the bridge.
Exactly.
So I don't, I, I don't want the county to have liability for the work that a private citizen is doing on our bridge. And unless people are willing to transfer liability to themselves. I, you know, and I, I don't know Alexis, how, how. You know, and I I don't know, Alexis, how how could you do that by contract? So if we allow, yeah, we allow somebody else to take down a bridge, can we transfer liability for their work to them? By contract.
Well, that's what we do with Holloway right now. I mean, they're the they're the contractor that does our bridge removal. They assume. Assume all responsibility.
Yeah, and contractors have insurance for that, but private citizens may or may not. So that's. I mean, that's I I just don't want it to result in the county having a lawsuit where we have to pay a fortune because. I mean, it's kind of inherently dangerous work.
What was that? Leo always made sure I got that when we're working. It was some so the county wasn't liable for any damages to anybody getting hurt. There was a certain.
Hold harmless clause.
What?
The hold harmless clause.
Yes, that's it. You know, and I I believe we did that when they took the bridges out before.
And so that works, Alexis?
I mean, I would treat this kind of like a if someone's agreeing to haul away our trash, right? Basically. So they're taking it as is and releasing us from all liability and and those type of things. So I don't know if there's some go by language or something we've used in the past with. Another company, but. That that's kind of how I would think it is. Once they once they take it and hauled away and whatever, however logistics is. I mean, this is kind of an interesting concept for me to think of, whatever logistics it takes for them to.
But wouldn't it be their property once they buy it?
Yes.
So I mean, it wouldn't be ours anymore.
So if they're purchasing it from us, yes, they're taking it as is. It's theirs and then it's.
The bridge itself belongs to them, but the property would belong to whatever governmental agency. Owns that road. Like it could be a township road. It could be one of, I don't think there's any of these that we own.
No, these are all on townships.
On township. So it'd be a liability for if somebody had, somebody had an injury on that property that's owned by that public entity. Whoever owns the bridge might not cover the liability that would follow the land rather than than the bridge itself.
So they're, yeah, they're gonna they're gonna pay us for this. This is them purchasing through whatever, I don't want to say surplus of county property because that's.
That's what it is.
I mean, so that's, I mean, once they purchase it, I think it's kind of no different than a a vehicle or something that they purchase and. And some it once they've, once they've purchased it from it, us. And if somebody wanted to throw that in, maybe in any advertisement or however we're gonna advertise for this, are they gonna bid for it or what?
Yeah, it's usually like a dollar.
As is and.
As is where is for the for the piece of metal. But what I'm driving at is the during the construction pro- deconstruction process, there could be liability. Ability that follows the land, the easement.
Follows the land that it's currently on?
Yeah, where the bridge is, the there's a. The township, the township has an easement or actually owns, they they have an easement on the land, not necessarily. Own the land.
We have like an easement. Fifty feet on either side of the bridge and. I don't know. We always went a hundred feet, but I think it's actually fifty feet off each end. That was our responsibility to keep. The approaches graded or, you know, so they could get on the bridge safely. But I, you know, I guess legally, I've never really seen that. That's just.
But that would be simple enough to just add the township.
Yeah.
Held harmless.
But the county doesn't have any ownership in that hundred feet that you're talking about then.
Not, I think it's just an easement. I I'm boy, I'm not sure.
Can't we just both, you know, the county and the township, whatever township that's gonna be involved, hold harmless clause and be done?
But what I'm saying, what I'm saying is now's the time to be thinking of that issue, not after somebody got hurt.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So just making sure that the language that conveys it and allows them to deconstruct it. Holds the county and the township harmless. For deconstruct, I mean, you know, there, these are, these are large structures that could fall on people and. You know, they can.
You know, I'm thinking when some of these private citizens actually go down and look at the bridge. They're gonna. Walk away maybe. See, we tried to sell the other bridge at Hammington's. We had to advertise that because as it had historical value, nobody wanted it until it got ready to come out. Well, it was already contracted to no draglining through the state. It's all state. Well, then, you know, I couldn't say nothing about it. So he went and talked to them. Lay loaded on somebody's trailer. That that saved them. They had a crane there capable of picking it up. That saved them dismantling it. So it saved them. It was a win-win for them. They didn't. They didn't want the scrap. So. And then after that, it was up to the farmer to get it unloaded, haul it, get it unloaded.
Yeah, Hammington Bridge was relatively small.
Yeah, that was a that was a pony trust, which means the steel on the sides about seven feet tall, eight feet. These are through pony trusses, thirteen feet tall with beams across and you just can't. Pick those up. I mean, they pulled that one in the river to get it out. That was one of the longer ones. That one up here.
Yeah.
So is that gonna be part of, was that negotiated as a part of? I mean, I I don't want to revert to like Vermillion rummage language, but U-Haul. That's part of the negotiation of things, right? Is that they're going to make suitable arrangements to for removal and.
Yeah.
And then they would assume.
So they got to plan that and everything out.
We did this through the state or the program to do it. They paid percent of of taking it out. We had to pay twenty. And it was all handled by them. They hired an engineering firm, came looked at all the bridges. And then they put them all out for bids and, you know, it's basically, I don't have to do anything. They they're holding it all the way there.
So the state engineers are made arrangements for the removal.
Right.
And now they're asking us to do that.
No, no.
No, they're gonna do it.
No, just because this was brought up to both of us by a private person. We're just seeing if that's a possibility that if they really want the bridge, I mean, I don't care who gets it. Long as it's out of there.
Saves the state money, saves us money.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's just part of negotiating with them that that's that it has to be a suitable. I don't know if you want to say company or someone for removal.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've always got a little bit of a risk of somebody taking the bridge, tearing down the bridge, getting the metal out. And then not completing the job, the approaches that. Rod was talking about earlier that. They walk away with the part that they want and not. Finish the contract. We have to sue them probably to to get them to finish.
And the only only bridges I've ever seen since I worked here that. Are able to be picked up and moved anywhere are the smaller ones. There's quite a few of them. That the bridges in near Spurdale.
The bridges golf courses, all of those smaller pony.
A lot of those came from Clay County. And some of them, they took parts out of the backyard and built a couple more, so.
Well, that's what I would. I would really almost say that the the bidding of this, when you look at that, the removal costs essentially become a part of the bid. So it's not just a dollar. I mean, if you have someone who's lining up an actual company who's going to properly remove this. They're essentially paying us more for the bridge, if you will, than someone who's like, well, I'm gonna give this world myself and.
Yeah, so let's project out here they're doing right now was a hundred and seven thousand somewhere is in there because we paid twenty-three, I think.
That's a huge bridge.
Yeah. So and this one we're talking about was a hundred and.
Way smaller than the one they're taking out right now.
I would just use whatever this state has done in the past as like our model for that.
I don't know if this is even gonna come.
Right. We just need to surplus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
See what happens at that point. I think when somebody goes out and takes a look at that.
Is the one by the landfill smaller?
No, that one's actually bigger than the one.
Really?
East of Gregwire's. That's really narrow right there. Those three bridges were that one, the one south of Waslands and Carp Street are all about same size.
So we just need a motion to surplus. Well, actually, we shouldn't do any of them yet until we figure out. Somebody's actually interested.
Right, right. I can contact the people and tell them here's the deal. You know, or. Contact the guy when the state gets it. If you could get it, you know.
That'd be the cheaper way for them.
I know. It would be a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
I think they're gonna find out. It's not just going and picking up a bridge and moving it that.
Ones we've already done are on a public contract, so you can show these folks. What is required and what the engineering is. So they kind of know what they're getting into upfront. That would be what's fair. And at that point, they may decide, nah.
Yeah.
Pay the twenty-three thousand dollars. Let state do it.
And we're getting pretty good deals.
Yeah.
I mean, what it really costs to take it out, what we're costing that.
Right.
Okay.
South Dakota Soybean Association grant for bridges?
Yeah, Tim Austin from up by Wakanda Centerville area. He's head of the. Well, he used to be the head of Soybean Association. Now I forgot his title, but they have a hundred thousand dollars. In grant money and they wanted to give ten thousand to each county. But it had to be strictly, when I first talked to him, strictly for engineering. On any bridge that soybeans are gonna be hauled over. It matter if it's on a gravel road. Or a oil road. And at the time he first contacted me, we didn't have anything. Because the state did the one up by Land deeds and we didn't have anything. Well, then we did the one by Bethel Hall. And so I told him, no, we already did that one. No engineering involved. But he got ahold of Brad Stanger. He knows what we were doing on that. So Brad was gonna show him. What all we had done down there to see if we could get some money, you know, to help pay for what we did, but I haven't heard any. More. The first thing he asked me, the plastic pipe we used, if I could prove they were soybean oil based. And I I could prove that from where we got that pipe, which was unfortunate. Well, then we run into a problem up here east of Bethel on that or east of nineteen on the Bollum Road. Where we got that huge scour hole. Because as soon as we drain it and they say it, we gotta continue. There can't be any laps. We gotta continue to fill that hole. And it's gonna take so many tons of clay that I don't think we could, I don't think we could do it. And. They won't come down and say it unless we guarantee we're gonna keep going, you know, until we get it done now. As many loads of clay as we're gonna have to haul. So Brad was gonna look at it and I go, oh, so there's some engineering. If he could use it on that bridge. So those two have been talking. I was hoping to get an update before. I came down today, but nobody got back to me. So there is some money out there whether we get a whole hundred thousand. Because apparently none of the other counties, because he called me again. He said, I I'm trying to give this money away. And I'm like, I'm trying to take it, but I just can't. Meet your guidelines, so.
How many loads of clay is it gonna take?
I can't remember how many yards Pullman told me, but it's a hundred and thirty feet. Long, eight, seventy feet wide and twelve foot deep.
That hole is.
Yes. There's, there's like nine, eight, nine feet of water in it right now. And we tried to pump it out with two pumps before. And they couldn't get in there to say it. Well, then they told me if they'd have got in there to say it. They were wondering what we were gonna do because we had no clay, no equipment there because I didn't realize, I thought once they saved it. There ain't no more fish that's gonna come up out of the mud, but that ain't, that ain't the rules you gotta follow with. I got that four oh four permit from the Corps of Engineers, you know. You'd think by now I would learn. To keep my mouth shut, but I didn't. That's been the whole, we'd had this filled a long time. If I wouldn't have brought the engineer into it. I know. So I don't know. I. I don't know what we have to do if we do get. Grant money because Dennis says when he gets grant money, he has to put it in the budget so we can use it. So. I mean, if if we get it this year. It would have to be used next year. Is that the way I understand?
No, we can surplus it.
Yes, we can still do an oil supplement.
Oh, we could. Okay. Okay, because I asked Dennis because he deals with the grants all the time. So I'm just aware that there is some money. I don't know if we'll get any ten thousand. I don't know what, but. I reached out to both of the guys. Neither one of them got back to me, so.
So what the heck is the cost to fill that hole, man?
Well, if we did it, I mean, it was gonna take quite a while. I figured we could just do it at stages. When we had time, we'd go down here. That ain't my court, my four oh four permit is had an open end on it, but. Open end to me means we can work at it when we can work at it. No, not when you. Gotta call in a biologist to say to make sure. There is no Topeka Shiners. And of course, right now it's breeding season. So they don't even want to come and say it till July.
Probably fall project.
But you can start hauling and dumping.
Well, we got quite a pile hauled there, but it ain't near enough to get going, you know. So that's what I want to see. If we. Could get it figured out what we need there. We get it there, get the dozer and the excavator. And like I said, this fall. Maybe we could just do it, but I gotta have. Somebody tell me what we need to do for sure. I mean, we could use the concrete. They didn't care about that for rip wrapper. Because you rip rap is another thing you gotta go clear dispenser to get. You can't get the class B in two falls anymore. Because they hit a vein of sand and it breaks apart before it gets that big, so. Just like everything. And then diesel fuel. The clay is coming from Pullman or K I Knutson's pit. So that ain't that far to haul, but. Still gotta buy that too, but.
Is clay gonna be rode away right away in the next?
No, that's why they, that's why they wanted to put that clay in the bottom. They did the same thing, just. North of the roll water treatment plant. They had the same thing up there at three D Specialties. And he said that was ended up being way bigger than he ever. And I swear we got a bigger hole than they do, but they were under the bridge with a dozer. That's how deep that hole was. In fact, I see they're up there digging all the silt out of the field finally, you know, because it scours out and then.
Right.
And that just, and it ain't even a channel. It's just a. I don't know. To me, I always saw it as an equalizer, but there must be an old prick that comes through there or something. But anyway.
Must be glacial till that they're quarrying up the Knutsons. So that that'd be more resistant to scour. Better than the silt that would normally naturally be under that bridge.
Yeah, see, we use that clay out of. That Knutson pit for backfilling.
Right.
Because it is fairly clean, very few rock and it packs like irons. Man, this is the best clay we ever. I don't, but even back when Art was here, that's where we always got the clay from. Now Mike Pullman has control of it. His two K I's, two kids. At the pit now and, you know, so. So, yeah, but we'll see. I'll let you know if we get any money for that. Just like let you know they contacted. Me, so they want to help is just. The National Association is the one that. Set the guidelines, so. They're not always that familiar with little. Pull down the road roads, you know. But it does get a lot of soybeans. So that's all I have. Anything for me?
I don't, that I can think of.
Thanks. Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
We've got the plat approval for the Norling addition. We've got the plat approval for the Norling addition. Microphone, please.
Yeah, this steel Norling property acreage trade up on Highway forty-six.
A motion and a second and further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Pose same sign, motion passes. Carp Street, Sudlow's addition.
Yeah, track one, two, and three of Sudlow's in northwest quarter, the southeast quarter, southwest quarter of the northeast quarter. Government lot one, northwest quarter, north half. Government lot one in southwest quarter and north half of southwest quarter. All in section seven ninety-three fifty-one. We had this on the planning agenda last night, and Travis, you had the track for. If it sold, the deed has not been recorded yet.
Four tracks, that, that was, that was, they just got. They sold one, two, and three at the sale. Across the river, on the, on the west side.
That's already been sold.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
They might add an auction or something like that.
Yeah, well, a couple of years ago, I think, when I understood, that was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, cause Reed Jensen told me that, that's who farms it, and he told me that, that piece across the river had been sold to it. But it doesn't matter, I mean.
One of those, it doesn't matter, I guess, but I know that one's.
This makes me nervous now, cause I didn't look back a couple of years ago, I just.
That's what he told me, that's all I. He's something, it's a Jensen out of Beersburg. Yeah, you're right.
Let's, I'm gonna look into this more.
I'll move to table then.
About a second. A motion and a second to table, all those in favor, say aye. Pose same sign, motion passes. First reading ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, a request to rezone land. Located at three one five four seven, four hundred and fifty-fourth Avenue. Meckling, South Dakota, from A one to C one for a motor vehicle repair shop.
Move to go to the second read.
Second. A motion and a second, do you have a time and day for the second? At night.
Said enough delay in between.
Five days, right? But I mean, we'll do this in the morning, Myers is at night. Cause it's a joint meeting, so it's at six or six thirty. I do have a question, do they need to be here for the second reading? Is that a requirement that we have for them to be here?
Requirements, they have to be here, but they, it's probably, it could be in their best interest to be here.
Next Tuesday. Same time, nine fifteen again, or?
Or, or ten minutes to ten. I think you got a good service to provide there.
So we've got a motion and a second to have the second reading on July fifth. All those in favor, say aye. Pose same sign, motion passes. So you got a planning and zoning update?
Uh, finished up the C P for. Peterson's hemp operation. And then had first reading or a. The planning meeting for. Barbara and Seano's project out on Highway fifty, that compound area. There, she wants to try to rezone that residential, she wants to break up that compound that.
West of Meckling.
Group home or whatever that was.
Lost money there.
Lots, but Marc, Marc's got a good idea to fix it, just break that compound up, cause nobody can buy that. We have had over a year, people calling and trying to buy it, but they can't get the, can't finance it from the banks. So she's just gonna break them up, put two other properties up on a hill. All in three feet or, you know, it's coming for the meeting. And then Toby's is a project we're also working on, trying to get that zone. Or at least get him a path, so it'll be, you know, expand that. He's got something to do. Maybe do something for Toby, I'm not sure.
And that, that'll involve you, Lexi. The questions he has. To kind of interpret the zoning ordinance, how, what we can and can't do in that area, he'll explain it to you. Got the HVAC system proposal.
Do we have a gentleman or on there at this point?
No, you're on your own, who are you waiting for? And is it Andy or not Andy? What was his name?
He was informed about it, I thought he'd be on today.
Well.
He's not there, though.
Let's move to commission room furniture.
So, I think you all got something to pack it on that. Little hand draw sketch was done by the architect. This is his perception, what he thought the room should look like, and he noticed on there. It was a good idea, but it required twenty-two and a half degree tables, which nobody makes, so. Means you have forty-five degree tables in there. Canfield drawing. Show two layouts, I'm not quite sure why you should two layouts there. Furniture, but as you can see, when they set those tables up there, that they are forty-five degree angle tables and they're set at twenty-two and a half. So. I guess one of my concerns about down there is everything's always gonna get moved and shuffled around and be kind of nice, it'll be kind of semi-permanent. So it's kind of there, it's kind of ready, we start getting tables. Whether the lot wheels are gonna be moved around a lot. And that was quite spending a little rate thousand dollars for that. A thousand dollars of that was them coming down, setting up. And then the other. Uh, proposal I got was from Source One out of Yankton. These tables, these tables does, do not show the drawing, but there is some type of cable management system within these tables also. The person out from Source One. Uh, Yankton, she came down, looked at and measured up the space down there, which is about forty-five feet. East to west and eighteen feet, six inches, uh, north to south from that. North wall to the pillar on the south there. And she thought the forty-five degree angle tables, if it went way too much through. She proposed that other drawing you see there, the out of cadence, the, basically what you see there laid out. That you see, if, if you walk in, I'm just gonna take Sezak for example, you walk in there. There's that reception area, basically, this is the base. Of that, you know, most, most time you walk in there and there'd be with on, sitting on top of the space, might be. Some type of visual blocks, you can't see what they're working on this net. So thi- this is just the base here, you know, this says they're, they're two foot by four foot. I believe is the measurement on there, and basically, they propose they invert it, like you see it drawn. This. The face is finished on that, so. You know, I've been able to see underneath tables, now Bill see the cords and this and that, but I think that's kind of a nice feature to it. So we looked at getting electrical in there, uh, so there's some costs related to getting electrical brackets, getting them installed on each table. But the drawing doesn't show, there's another whole drill for a grommet where the microphone. Uh, cabling would go down through and basically, you know, everything would be behind this front. So nobody'd be able to see it. This is a little more stationary, can be a little harder to move around. I think it's kind of a nice, I, I like this idea better than the other one. I think it's gonna look better. Yeah, I think it's just gonna look better, make more stability pleasing, cause I, as far as how do we get electrical to this?
This is the one you're looking at.
Yes, sir, that's the one, how do we get electrical to that? There's a couple of options that I've looked at down there. Anyway, yes, about twelve feet, so. One of my thoughts was coming off that, that column in the middle, that, that column to the south. Coming down with electrical, you know, might actually just have to lay it on top of the floor, but put one of those. Thresh old type things over it, so we're not having tripping issues. And I could tie right into the end there of the, of this U-shaped structure here. Or it's possible just to come down out of ceiling with something too, which doesn't got to look near as nice, but. I, I would. Get with Ryan Todd's electric and see what his thoughts are on that, but. You know, I haven't really addressed how to get the electrical there, but, you know, it's, it's a doable deal, one way or another, we can get electrical to that. So these are the two different ideas and proposals that, that I researched to this point. I did some math on the one from one source here, that's about two thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. All said and done, with everything installed and ready to go, doesn't. Doesn't include chairs, I assume, we didn't need chairs, we have these chairs. So that's kind of where we're at on the furniture, for over there. I don't know if I'll research other options, or what's your thoughts on?
My only concern with this one is you can't see the audience very well, if you're on the sides.
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have to turn more and look at them, I guess.
This is Lane, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Excuse me. As you can see, if you go down there, I haven't put the TV and stuff together, cause I've been kind of waiting to see how we. Organize the chairs and stuff, but. Was one of them, did I hear you correctly, just a U-shaped, one-piece, large? Like table for the commission then?
No, it's a.
Seven tables.
Seven, either, either proposal, seven, seven table.
Okay, then I just, okay, combine together to make one.
Right.
Um, I think, whatever way we go, we need to make that. At least everybody knows that it's not movable, because once we start running cables through the microphones and. All of that, we can't have people trying to move that desk around.
Sure, that makes sense. You know, and on the table option, it's not shown here, uh, from Canfield, but, you know, those can probably all be. Ordered with those modesty skirts, whatever they call them, go across the front of there. Also, like, he doesn't show in the drawing, I'm sure to be extra, but. Go on to research other options, I should keep looking around.
I would agree with Travis, it's got that say, a little concerned that. This one on the side that you're not really seeing the audience.
Maybe we can figure out how to make a, make it so it's more of a trapezoid. So the, so the wings are out a ways, maybe that could be twenty-two and a half and use. Use some, make, make some little. Angle shape. Inserts, I guess, to make it so we could make it so the sides flutter. So that, so we get this to look more like the other one. You know, I've seen in office furniture setups where they have their little triangle shaped. Table, very, very small tables, which could address that problem for us. Probably cost another five hundred bucks.
What if we get something custom built? What if we get something custom built? The only reason I ask is when we redid our house, that this carpenter, he was actually installed, was cheaper than we could go to Menards and buy. But he built exactly to fit the house, you know, when we remodeled the house, it was a lot better, cause he fit every little corner. I can contact him and see if he, if he's interested.
It'd be a bad idea. Yeah.
And then put it out for bid.
Yeah, cause I know Andy found this online somewhere, but once again, that. Well, yeah. So you know, that, that's, those are all forty-five, it gets pretty tight. You guys concerned about being able to address the audience, so. Yeah, pass that on to me.
Cause I think like a crescent moon shape type desk. That would have all these cables ran through electrical. Can we put it on wheels, to be moved then, to slide back?
And once, once you do the electrical, that's really hard unless you wanna put plugs between every. You'd have to put connections. Every table.
Well, it'd only be one connection, cause it'd all be one table.
I think with the microphone cables too, if we wanna run them properly, so that we don't have this mess we have here.
Correct.
It's gonna be awfully hard to move them after we run.
We're probably better off if we do that to have. You know, a still thing that's impossible for two people to move.
In the old days, um, we used to do a lot of training in the upstairs city council room. And that had a stationary desk, and it wasn't that big of a deal. To do the training, you just, you know, you don't have twelve feet behind that table, it's. Kind of where you're at now, it wasn't inconvenient by any means, but. If you, if we can attach all the cabling to the desk itself, so it's not on the floor. Then potentially, we can move it back, but I don't. Think you're really gaining all that much room in the whole scheme of the.
But a stationary table will work, I mean, it's not gonna be in you guys' way.
We can still set up other tables, can use these ones. From what Scott and I've talked about. And I've talked to police about it, unless we deviate too much from this plan, then we okay.
I don't think we need to, it doesn't need to be extravagant. It just needs, it just needs the curve, so we can all see each other and.
You don't want, you know, unfinished lumber or anything like that. And I think, what is it, you know, in terms of going to bed, I, I think it's, I don't think this would see.
I hope not, it's fifty thousand, it's fifty thousand before. It's gonna be a really nice table.
So yeah, you had a guy's name, I will, and I'll reach out to him.
Yeah, and maybe figure out, uh, you know, whether there could either be built or bought triangles. And, and so we can compare. The ones that, that. Were mentioned earlier.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I had a desk that had exactly that in. It was just, it was just a little, you know, to make it go around.
I I never took any time to get online myself and look around, so. What's that? All right, well, we have the answer there then. Next is, or in the jail there, there there is a mop sink in the jail. I guess at one time used to be a shower there. Probably eleven, twelve years ago, that was put in a mop sink. There's no pressure there at all. Well, very little. So my proposal was was to get that remedied and taken care of. And so I crawled into the belly of the beast the other day, see what's going on underneath there and. There, so you go in through the voting storage room here. There's a hatch back there and you can get back underneath there. There's like three compartments, get a crawl through, so it's the far one. The far west one there and inside there, so it's not all. There is some copper in there. And I don't know why in the world, when they put that sink in twelve years ago, they didn't tie in the copper, but they didn't. They tied right back in the old galvanized water lines. Of course, now those are grown shut and we're not getting the pressure that we need there. So my proposal was if we go in there, we go in there once and we take out the cast iron that's underneath there. We take out the galvanized water lines that are underneath there. Anything that we can get to and reach to, we can either get to schedule forty PVC pipe for draining. Or the quest or or not the pecs or the copper for supply lines. So was back underneath there Friday with some representatives from Turner Plumbing. And some conversing with Adam from Turner Plumbing yesterday. And we're looking at probably forty-five hundred dollars. Are looking at a day that got the cast and the old drain lines out of there and then another day to do water lines underneath there. So I was just bringing that before the commissioners here to let them know what the cost of that was going to be. And I talked to Andy, he said he was strapped for cash. We pretty much. Clean, we clean out his repair budget at that. The more I got to talking about, I thought, I think this is going to get a lot more expensive than I thought it was going to get. You're looking at a hundred and forty dollars an hour for two plumbers underneath there. What's that? It's what it's whatever is underneath there that's not modern day.
But so under, under that crawl space or above that crawl space, you've got the men's room on the first floor, public men's room. And then you've got two jail cells and the mop sink, so.
You're talking about the bathroom in the courthouse? I think that's in that mill compartment. That looks like that's all been. All been modernized. It's just that far west. Underneath there.
Two, two jail cells.
Yeah, and it looks like there's a huge copper line that runs underneath there to picks up those. Those facilities in the cells there. I don't know for the world to me why they didn't tie that copper, that copper when they did, but they did.
That's a supply line?
Yeah, I mean, that's that's probably a one-inch line. I wanted to go on the other cell and kind of take the back off that one, but there's a prisoner and I wasn't able to. To see how that all ties in together, that coming off those toilets underneath there is still cast. But I think it's cop, basically, long story short, there'd be nothing underneath there when we left it was that's if a scallopizer cast is coming out. So that's that's my proposal. But that's what we're looking at for money, so I just wanted to bring it up. So if we want to move forward or if we want to wait to twenty twenty-three with it. Because we're looking at forty-five hundred dollars for this up here in the WIC bathroom, which I haven't pulled the trigger on that one yet, so.
I always think of. Galvanized supply lines as being little ticking pot time bombs.
They are.
I've had bad experiences with those in for millions. We do. The way the water chemistry setup, it it does grow that over a period of time.
So you're saying the whip in this altogether would be forty-five hundred?
Forty-five hundred each.
Each.
And we, and you guys approved the. Whatever, three or four weeks ago when I talked about that. So.
Yeah, it seems like a lot for a mop sink. How critical, how critical is the mop?
Well, you you need some place where you can mix your chemicals and mix them properly and, you know, you know. I would propose if it was fixed to put a solution, a solution system in there, so. You know, everything gets mixed properly because right now I'm sure it's the glove glove and a little bit of water because you're not getting much more than a little bit. There's other options over there for filling a mop bucket. Don't really know. Didn't really look around, you know, I don't know.
Well, what they have is over on the PD side, they put a mop sink in ten years ago, maybe.
In the men's bathroom.
In the men's bathroom. This mop sink went where it used to be the the only shower in the jail. And then then they, we used to get our mop water in the courthouse men's bathroom. And then when this this shower came in after we added the addition in in eighty-nine. And then after some time, then in the courthouse, they took out one of the men's toilets and put a mop sink in there. Because at that point, the they were coming into the jail for mop water. And then so now there's a mop sink in the men's bathroom on the first floor of the courthouse. There's one in the PD. And then there's one in in the jail, but it doesn't work work well, so otherwise they're going quite a ways in and out of secure areas. It'd be really good to have one in the jail. And we we mop a lot in there and it'd be good to have it. And then besides just the mop sink, we're also talking about those, the cast under those toilets. They're they're, it's gonna happen, you know. Those are gonna give out, they're gonna leak, or they're gonna plug up.
You know, it's, you know, another option is to, you just go down there and do what you gotta do. You replace the.
Little at a time.
You replace the water lines, but some might be back underneath there to be something else, but. I guess we're all kind of in level right now because we don't know which way this boat's going to go in November and what are we going to actually do with that building in four or five years? You know.
It'll still be used, so.
Yeah, it'll still be used, but I imagine that area might be modified somewhat, you know, we don't, you know, so.
We also talking about all this money in plumbing. We had the project Scott and I've been talking about is replacing the shower in in. The the north side of the jail, there's a secure shower. It's the only shower we have that's in a secure area. But only four inmates could use it, but right now that's where we keep our worker lease. And that shower is long since gone out of commission. A couple of years ago, we just closed it off. I'd like to get that back going again, but it was what eighty, eighty-five hundred bucks for if Scott installs it? And what, twelve?
Eight, about eighty-five hundred if we do it ourselves, about eight thousand eighty-five hundred for just the shower. Because an institutional stainless steel shower, and then if I got a price from Hander to install. That was thirteen thousand dollars for a shower and install.
So that isn't even in my budget request for twenty twenty-three, so. Is that one you just don't use or you have it valved off, shut off the water to it? It's shut off. Well, and it's also gated off. You can't access it. Yeah, because we closed it off. It's, it used to be a jail cell and then when the the elevator shaft went in, we lost that jail cell. And then so it was turned into a shower. This is before my time. It was turned into a shower area, but so it's, that cell door is closed, so nobody can access it. So it's just out of commission right now. It's rotten and it's plugged in, it leaks and it needs to be replaced. But Scott said the the one he found is the exact same thing. It's a stainless steel corrections grade shower unit. You know, if we if we pass our vote in November and don't, then I probably don't think we would want to do it. We just get by. But the worker lease come back and they need to shower, and so then they're let back out of the cells and then. Since we have inmates walking around the jail, then that actually introduces the contraband concern because we have. Worker lease inmates moving around where there's other inmates. I don't like that. It would be nice to have, but at that kind of cost. It's worth discussing.
And and back on, back to the mop sink real quick, you know, I can crawl back underneath and run a couple of lines that could be split where. We're out, but you you're still going to have issues there, but. Maybe that's the thing to do to save the money. Let's see where we're rolling in November.
Well, I want to call it temporary.
I tap in, I tap in and run some pecs over there.
Fixing the immediate problem and not the future.
You're gonna, you're gonna get your water pressure. You know, I was just trying, I was just trying to avoid issues down the line, but. You know, that kind of money and like I said, better off, you know, wait till November, see where we're going, I guess.
I think that's the best idea.
Yeah, get some pecs in there so we reduce our flood damage at least, risk where that galvanized were to. Suddenly give us, give us a nice flood, we. You wouldn't even know. Would run under there for months and we probably wouldn't even know. Other than the loss of pressure, which we already have loss pressure there. Yeah, now galvanized is probably, it's actual. Area that the water can flow through it is probably one-fifth of what it, what it originally was, so. I would think if we could take care of the pressure side. That that would reduce our our risks and it might actually help quite a bit. And it's, we're now replacing stuff that. Is likely to change because of getting rid of the channel. Your mop, you know, you'd still need that.
Right.
Still need that mop sink.
Okay.
That's my opinion. As I always say, I'm one-fifth here. You know, thinking about the future, if our vote were to pass and we built an off-site jail, those cells would be some I would like to keep. Because we will now and then be bringing inmates here for court and I've got to put them somewhere. And that would allow me two separate cells to house men and women separately for during court appearance, so those would be the ones ideally we'd hang on to. Yeah, but you wouldn't need the shower facility for that. No, no, and so they, yeah, on that north side, we maybe repurpose that for courthouse use, but. Or those, the newer cells in the new addition, I could keep those ones. Maybe, and that would probably be maybe a better way to go, thinking about it now, because they're more modern. But we will need a few holding cells since we're offsite.
All right, I got my marching orders.
There you go.
So we're gonna wait till next week on the HVAC then, since he's not on?
Yeah, I'll contact and see what's going on. There's one other thing that's not on there, maybe Lexi can speak to this. About the drop ceiling up there. So she's living up there.
So that has been a wonderful change in our office. I really appreciate Scott for taking care of that. And gentleman who came and did that work was super professional. I think it looks really good. If you hadn't. Had an opportunity, feel free to swing up and take a look at that and you'll hear when you go from outside in the hallway into our office, an immediate difference. The echo disappears. We have had. Comments of you can still hear voices, but you can't hear verbatim what people are saying from office to office if you're talking in a normal tone. There was some indication that maybe we're going to see how it goes and see if there needs to be something on that wall between my office and the restroom, but so far so good. It's a dramatic difference and as they would complete each room in the office. You could tell, like I said, walking from one room that wasn't completed into one that room that was. So that's an option for other places in the future. I don't know who else might need that, but it, and it looks really, really nice. I was worried that it might make the rooms feel, not worried, but you know, I wondered if it would make the rooms feel smaller. I don't feel like it does at all. They kept it high enough up. That I think it still looks really classy with. With the building and so, and and the tiles were not what I expected. I think they look really nice. So please feel free to stop up and take a look. I might be a solution for other offices if they're having trouble with this. That was, that was a wonderful addition.
Yeah, the guy is. Most people probably know on here. Those pipes running up through the ceiling, you know, most people would just cut. You know, rectangle or whole, they'd measure the width, measure the length, because where this guy. Scribed, almost literally scribed around these pipes. Make these tiles fit. I couldn't believe the work that that guy did. He's been doing forty-five years, so. Better hurry up, get him before he retires, do the rest of the building.
Yes, I I did think about that. If the bathroom, I don't want to take that poor bathroom out of commission for any period of time, but. They worked pretty quick too. I was amazed at how quickly he could do that and they did the main office on that day that we had off. So it worked really, really well. Linda and Victoria were out anyway and so super easygoing to work with. It was nice.
Where was this guy from?
Acoustical. Yep, and he 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 came in, did most of that by himself and I'd be amazed at.
Yes.
He worked at and the quality work there was just crazy. You just don't find it nowadays.
I agree. As long as we talk about the bathroom, whether it's out of commission or not for that, I think it'd probably be a good idea to consider it at least. But before we do, maybe, and I hadn't had a chance to talk to you, Scott, but that that drain. That comes down out of the ceiling in that left corner behind the door. It's always, it's got like this tape over it or some, some kind of a. Something and it's it's all black, so I don't know if we have a leak there or there's.
That's in the bathroom we're talking.
Yeah, so maybe check that out.
Yeah, you can patch a hole with duct tape and it holds forever.
So, yeah.
As long as there's not water. As long as that water coming through. I do that at my house. I didn't do it for customers. It was a temporary thing. Okay, that was all I have unless you guys have something for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Andy, while you're here, surplus old sheriff cars computer, computers.
And we replaced them this past year. New ones, and so I just wanted to get rid of these things. They've got criminal justice data on it. I talked to, I'm sorry.
I I talked to Ericson's and they told me that for, I think it was fifteen dollars a computer, they'd wipe them and recycle them. And I have no use for it. I did offer him route to the courthouse. Scott was going to take me up on a few of them. Because they're pretty durable to carry around, but Arthur at Erickson said you just, they've got no life left in them. They they would take, you know, ten minutes to boot up for us to use them and and he didn't recommend them for Scott. And so I just want to get rid of them.
So do we need a motion to surplus them?
Yep.
So.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Pose same sign, motion passes.
This is regarding the discretionary formula, Senate Bill one sixty-two, changed the way. That they do discretionary on. Multi-family residents. And affordable housing structures. Instead of. Twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, one hundred percent. It's a five-year right now and if this. Is approved, then it's going to go twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty, fifty, seventy-five, seventy-five, and in the seventh year, one hundred percent. And if it's not approved, then the discretionary on those type of buildings goes away. So they start paying full taxes on it, so.
So they get, this gives a pretty good incentive to. Build new multifamily setups in town.
Right, and and the affordable housing is like Madison Park apartments.
Right.
So, and it and it is definitely for, you have to have at least four units.
And this, this stretches out the rebate for.
The exemption, yeah.
Right, exemption.
Or pay the taxable. Value that you're paying.
We certainly need more of that housing, so I I move approval.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? When you mentioned that Madison, the Madison Apartments, they came in, you know, and. On their taxes that one year, after the formula went off and said that, you know, based on income. Our property's not worth as much.
And they're on what's called tax credit. So that's, it's, it's actually figured differently because of the tax credits, it's not really on assessed value, it's on the income. This last year, with the new apartments that we put on, um, there was some, since they didn't have a full. When Linnea figured that she, they didn't have a full year's value. So when we looked at it again, and that's why we adjusted some of that this year, year on that one, and, but we did raise the um. First set of apartments that they did this year, by doing the income, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion passes.
I just want to point out, everybody that's on the discretionary right now for those type of buildings stays at the. Twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, one hundred, it's just the new ones that will be coming on for the twenty twenty-three year.
Thank you. Everybody get to see vouchers and payroll?
Yes, move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Opt-out resolution discussion.
So if we are going to renew our opt-out, we have to do that by July fifteenth, I thought it was a good time for you to start discussing that.
Probably looking on your end.
Looking really good, you know, our, our population is holding just a little under our projection, and uh, Union County's been very good.
Sorry, keep forgetting, um, remember, we, we budgeted last year at an average daily population of twenty, and um. And at Yankton County rates, because it was in between Minnehaw County and Union County, figuring it's kind of uh shooting from the middle. And uh, Union County's taken almost all of our inmates, and uh, our population's holding right in there, I think if I ran. The last twelve months, we'd be in that twenty range, I think uh, this year, we're in uh. Let's see, for the first half of this year, I think we're gonna be a little above twenty. We were in the first quarter this year, our average was twenty-four inmates, so um. I think that our, our projection's probably about right for this year. Um, but we're just lucky that Union County's been able to hold for us. And uh, Dan La Moes tells us, as long as he sheriff, he's gonna continue to try to do that. I don't know how crowded they're getting down there, because there's gonna come a point where they're gonna run out of beds. Uh, they were gonna add some beds, and my understanding is that uh, that got rejected. And so um, but they were only gonna add holding cell beds, which they really need. And so um, in their population, though, I don't know if they'll come a day that they, that they can't continue to take, but he says for now, that's not a problem. So I'd have to do some math to be an estimate on what we think we have, but. So dollar-wise, if you think where we're at now, we're not looking that we should make any adjustments, or? I don't think so, other than uh, you remember the opt-out included enough to replenish uh reserves that were depleted, so. It shouldn't need to be that high, I gave Carrie a, a projection for um. For next year, I just honestly don't remember what I put in for it, but it, it's in there, uh, considering our, our population and. And the daily rate.
And the um, the projection for next year is based on an average of how many inmates a day?
I think, I think I did a twenty, I don't have it in front of me right now, I um. Uh, when I did my, my budget prep, I, I've got notes, but I didn't bring them with me, because I, I didn't realize I was gonna talk about this.
No, that's fine, so if, do we want to talk about this at the next meeting, then, so everybody's got their notes in front of them?
I am, but yeah, I think that, I think that I'm still probably looking, still probably looking at about twenty inmates a day, and, and uh. You know, probably still, I honestly, I don't remember, but I think I'm figuring eighty dollars a day. Union County will go up, it's gonna, they're not gonna keep us at sixty-five forever, there's gonna come a day, they're gonna, their, their employees get raises, and. Their costs go up, and they're gonna have to increase this at some point, so it won't stay at sixty-five forever.
So you just want to put that on for next Tuesday, Carrie?
Yeah, and I'll have your budget practice team by then too. I just want, I need the discussion started soon. Let's come up quick.
So Dan made kind of a commitment to continue to receive our prisoners, but he didn't have any crystal ball. On his sense of his commission would be on the rate. That's correct, and he also, of course, can't project other than just looking at trends like I do on what their population's gonna, gonna do. Right. I mean, they have under sixty beds, I think it's fifty-six beds that they have, and um. And he was intending to add more, but I, I don't think it would have increased his actual housing, it would have been beds they needed in, in booking, but. If they fill up, then we're gonna get pushed out. They're happy to keep taking our money, though, he's very happy about that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we've got the regional jail resolution, did everybody get to see the, the new draft? Andy, did you get to see it?
Yeah, I did, and uh, yeah, any, uh, what few concerns I had, Betty, Betty addressed, I'm very content with how it reads.
Do we want to vote on this today, or are we good with it, and then Carrie can just get me a clean copy that I can sign?
I'll move to accept it.
Well, we don't even have a number on it.
No, um, we, we don't, and if I had an access to my. Files here, I could probably give you a number, but he, you have to state the number in the motion, you can just.
Okay.
That resolution.
Like we've uh, the discretionary formula is uh, twenty twenty-two dash.
And then we've got a couple of the flat resolutions in there too, so I really, I don't remember what number it is. I haven't signed to it, but I don't have access to my files.
Are we okay, we're approving it next meeting, then, we have all the number, every, let's just do it next meeting, then.
Get it in final form, then we'll just move on it at that time.
Yeah, and I, I noticed that the um State Association um suggested that this. Uh, this is the right month to send proposed resolutions for adoption by the association this summer. And um, I think everything we can do to support this um is gonna be helpful. Um, and so I, I'd like to suggest that um, you know, we create a version of this and send it. Uh, to the State Association requesting that it be considered um by the um. Uh, the, the association members when they get together this summer. And if, if you're interested in doing that, I'd be glad to, to work on this and get together with uh, with Christie, um, you know. To make sure I'm not missing anything big, and then, you know, we can. Send it as a group onto them.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else for that one? See progress, Lucian?
This is purely normal, isn't it?
Yeah.
I guess I'll move to, to approve it.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Um, let's see, the Wick contract. And this is pretty standard.
Look to approve the Wick contract renewal.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Commissioner laptops.
It looks like a good price. Um, my only question was whether software is separate from that, in other words, is, do, do we have. Access to software under a different deal, so we're only buying hardware? Or do we have to pay for software?
Because we already have the licenses.
Okay, okay.
Transfer to the new machines.
Yep. So I move approval.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. I think we got through everything except executive session, so before we go into that, there's nothing else, correct?
Right.
Take a motion to go into executive session for contractual.
So move.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign, we're in executive session.
Move to come out of a second session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we're in regular session. Everybody have anything else?
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we're adjourned, thank you.